Nigerian students are the only students who come to class in Benfis, in other parts of the world. And their parents are here stealing you dry. And we are questioning whether we can fund education. Why not, my brother? We will fund education. Do you know why? I went to the University of Lagos in 1989 with four parents. My father gave me 45 naira. I needed to pay 45 naira for school fees and 9 naira for accommodation. My father didn't have the other 9 naira. But I went to school regardless. Met my uncles. So it took me 120, I mean, 45 plus 15 naira to go to the University of Lagos with a huge bag of curry that I took with me. And today, I'm standing in front of you. If education was too expensive, I wouldn't have been able to attend the University of Lagos. So why would I do it for you? What's best, Nigeria, is set up a room for students. So that you can even have extra money to take care of your extracurricular activities, including buying yourself clothes, buying yourself a laptop. Those great things that you need to be in school. We can do it if we take away corruption from our system. People, we have about three intervention programs for education. There's an education tax. There's another one, I don't remember exactly now. People are there every year. They are stealing it, they please try and using it to build mansions. And we are not challenging them. But you are going to be elected into Nigeria's presidency, president next year. They are not tolerating tips. And we will not allow them to get away with anything. And as long as they cannot steal, there will be more than enough to pay your school fees by the federal government. Let me tell you, and I say it once again, I've been saying it. Nigeria has been servicing the needs of the greedy. And you can never satisfy a greedy person. It is time to turn it around and start servicing the need of the needy. And that is where your school fees will come from. Our universities don't even have up to a million students. We don't. I am not saying that I pay school fees for state universities, but we can provide them incentives, loans. So that they can pay for their school. We don't even have enough spaces for students to go to school. We have to develop. And there's a lot of work to do, people. Just let's get over with the election so that we can get on the path of progress. So that you can be happy. You will not be doubting me by this time after May 30. You'll be wondering where the man is getting money from. I already know where the money is. Haven't worked at Sahara Reporters for 12 years. I know where they hide all the dead money they put in. And I'm not hoping to be the number one which will blow out the federal economy of Nigeria. Say to all the people on your message, you are contributing to the election. Anytime you make a comment on Facebook to challenge the BMCs, this is the Bahari Media Centre, they come there. You are making a contribution to the election. Anytime you see somebody down and put some sense in their brain about the future, you are contributing to our electoral victory. You know, you know how they say that sense fall on you. Let sense fall on everybody who is still in doubt. That we are taking Nigeria back and you are the ones who are most suited to do it. Like I keep saying, if you want an election to be won for your candidate, young people, nobody can beat the election. Nobody. Because somebody was asking, how do we ensure that they don't beat the election? We did it in 2015. The only reason why they did not beat 2015 election was because we had reported 10 states resorts before nightfall. You know, when it comes to election results in Nigeria and PDP, it is darkness that changes the result. It was the reason why who maybe went and sat on the floor and was shouting. We were able to use technology to report the election in a timely manner, instantaneously. If we can do it for other people, we will do better for ourselves. On election day, take your device there. As soon as the voting is completed, take a shot of the voting list and send it to a central database that will provide to you around that time. And by the time they finish collecting their own results, we have announced our own results. You remember that it was the Sahara Reporters that was first to announce the opening of the election in 2015. Before then, we used to rely on NTA to do it. And you know when NTA does something? Political platform, good question. We are having conversations with a lot of political platforms. We have become a darling of political parties. There are 68 political parties in Nigeria. A lot of them are talking to us, we're talking to them. What we found out in the process of talking to political parties is that if we weren't approaching this from a movement standpoint, we would have run into Trump very quickly. And most of the political parties that are in existence today were created by the PDP and APC on special duty. So when you look at their constitution, look at their composition and their format, you will not believe it. Even the most progressive political party you see out there, they have booby traps in them. Some of them, even that were created by a chief and they found me, were asked to go and pay 7 million naira. Where would I get 7? And I'm not going to borrow money like Bahari Media borrowed money. That, you know, he said he couldn't buy his money, borrowed money. Turns out it was silver that gave him the money, the Baestha guy. We are not doing that. We want this election to not cost us money. We want it to cost us ideas. And ideas will be spent until we defeat the big behemoth of APC, that is all past criminals and PDP, Papa Deceiving, Free King. The footballers that died and you said they didn't pay them their money, just wait for us next year. The people that ate the money will vomit it. That's all I can tell you. It's not only footballers that died, but the money that they have been stealing from the Bakasi refugees. We will also make sure that an average of a billion naira is raised on behalf of Bakasi refugees every year. Go to their camp, which is 45 minutes from here. They don't have water, they have no place to sleep. Yesterday, we found out that a woman was trying to have a baby in the country died. She has not been buried. The child is one month old, innocent child. Nigerian leaders are wicked. And the only way we can have peace is to just remove these kind of leaders we have today. You are saying, yeah, somebody mentioned Cross River being challenged, sitting of Bakasi. I was opposed to sitting Bakasi to Cameroon. I was actually working with one of the activists in those days. His name is Eni, I don't know his first name. Well, he mysteriously died in an auto accident. The Nigerian government did injustice to the people of Bakasi by giving away Bakasi. But there's a judgment in that regard. But apart from the judgment, there's the Green Three Agreement that says that the people of Bakasi must be properly relocated. And their relocation and resettlement must be well funded. We will take that agreement and make sure that it is implemented to the letter, that they have place to sleep, they have shelter over their head, and they will be, their culture is restored. We will take care of our borders. It's not only here that our border is porous. It's porous also up north. Right now, a lot of people are worried about registration of voters because there's influx of people from Niger, Chad, everywhere that they could come from. They are coming in to register in Nigeria. But they will be disappointed when the election comes because no matter how many will register anywhere, you cannot read beyond the number of voters in your state, right? I announced the issue of the securement of the votes. We are the ones now that are driving the conversation around the underage voters in Bahari. It's Sahara that is pushing that they should release the results, I mean, the investigation they did. And we are talking and we will make sure that they produce that result so that we can get rid of underage voters that they are relying on in Kano and elsewhere. We will make sure that this election is free and fair. But the election cannot be said to be free and fair if it only elect rooks, mediocres and corrupt people. We want to ensure that Nigeria is put on the path of progress. I mean it, and we mean it. I will take Nigeria back. Again, I cannot believe my eyes that I will have this number of people sitting in front of me. I don't have a dime in my pocket that I was to speak. I came here with a ticket bought for me by someone on the airpiece. I came here sleeping in a hotel that was provided to me by some of you. I was dreaming to everywhere I went in a car owned by someone, a young person, and fueled by another young person. I've been enjoying this free ride. And by next year, it will be time for you to enjoy a free ride in your own country. And I promise that that will happen. But do not let us relent because the worst that the truth of us has not come yet. They will bring propaganda, they will bring blackmail. And finally, they might want to also bring violence, to divide us. Resist them, whatever you can resist them. Don't allow anybody to provoke you. Keep speaking truth to your aspirations and your desires to have a free country, a country that you can call your own. A country where you are not abused and called a lazy person or a consequential human being. A country where you don't get mistreated by even smaller countries around us when you carry a Nigerian passport. I know what it means to suffer as a Nigerian because I travel extensively. And in my 19 years in America, I refused to do one thing. I never changed my citizenship. And the reason I never did it is that I think if I changed my citizenship, one, I would have lost a little part of my person. And I might give me to another country. Secondly, it's a reminder of the need to save Nigeria. The moment you humiliate me, I will say to you like Gaddafi said to the Italians, when they drove him out of school when he was in class four. He said, "You drove me out of the class, I will drive you out of this country." That is what they have done to us. They driven us, driven us out of our places of comfort. They driven us out of employment, driven us out of health, driven us out of power, economic empowerment. But we drive them out of this country. That's what we're going to do come next year. We will be democratically and peacefully. And they are in for a shock. I tell you, I know it already. I know when the president of Nigeria is about to lose election. I can already feel it. I can smell it. Yes. Again, we will appeal to you. Okay, I have some written questions here. Somebody said, "What will you do for Cross River State when you become president? Will you appoint the Minister of FCT from Cross River?" We are interested, please. How about we bring the Federal Capital Territory to you?
I hear you, sir. I hear you.
I would love to be, I would love for Cross River or Kalaba to be the FCT because it's cool in here. It will be the nicest place to just be chilling as the president of Nigeria. Everybody in Nigeria under our government should be able to become Minister of FCT. But what we are doing and what we do is to bring the support to every part of Nigeria that you won't even feel it if your person, if your person is not the Minister of FCT. As long as you are enjoying life, who cares? As long as you have jobs, who cares? As long as you have education, who cares? As long as you have electricity, who cares? As long as you have a great life, we will forget your ethnicity. Because when we travel out of here, the first thing Nigerians love to do, which I love about Nigeria, there's a guy I picked up from the airport. He was coming to America. I called him the next day, he was already speaking a bonics. "Meh, meh, meh, meh." I say, "Come on, now we may pick you from the airport." 19 years, I know, no, 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 no. You know, no, 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 no. I say, "Please, shut up." That's how much we love to learn, you know? It means that we don't really have an epic boom in our bodies. We are people who are willing to associate anywhere. But that part has been taken away from us. That's why we hand on to whatever we can find. And in most cases, our ethnicity is the only thing left. So we have gone through it. But since I have been here and all the questions I have in front of me, nobody has asked me to say where I come from. Nobody has asked me my religion. This is the real Nigeria that we need for the future. And this hall is, ooh! The only time this hall would have been as filled up as this, I'm sure it's a crusade. But this is the real crusade that we have all been waiting for. To take our country back, you know? And I'm sure that this is sanctioned from the heavens as well. So I also have another question here, looking at the attendance. You would believe that we are ready for you. Now, what level of technology are you going to be using to protect our votes? The biggest technology you have is in your pockets. One thing I love Nigerians about is how, where we like to use technology. You know, in America, you get a call from your brother or sister from time to time. And sometimes when they release a new phone, I hear it from Nigeria. They say, "Brother, can you help me get Samsung something, Galaxy something, 9 notes?" I've never, I had to go on Google to check. Because in America, you just go to your phone company, they hand you what you don't even check. But here, we love technology. So the best technology in the world is in our pockets, in our hands. Use it on the election date. It's just a matter of transmitting whatever you have found to another person. And by 12 noon on February 16, which by the way is my birthday, we would have known the election results. And it will be clear to the old guards that they have been retired permanently from the space called Nigeria. So an African country successfully use blockchain technology to conduct an election. Is tech going to be used? Tech will be used under our system. But you know, we are going into an election that we have no control over in terms of the constitutional provision for it. But we will use technology to follow, monitor and report the election. That's what I'm saying. So blockchain will be used. Every chain that has the technological experience, we will be used to defeat these people. One of the things that I've been saying to them is that when we were talking about fundraisers, you know, people were saying, "Oh, how many defeat them with they have money, have money?" And see, they don't understand that there's new form of money in town. These guys don't know that there's something called Bitcoin. And it's not something you can put in a Ghanaian school. It travels faster than any currency and it can purchase anything that you want. But they have no idea. Let's keep it a secret, you know? Because that's how we're going to defeat them. Somebody said here, "So, yes, I want your courage to challenge the side of us because this alone has won a lot of us over." Can you please make us understand why you have been accused of blackmail prior to this time? I get accused of all kinds of things since I entered the university. When I was at the University of Lagos, I was accused of working for Gani Power, even when I had not met him. When I was about to leave the university, I was accused of leading a cult group, even though I never belonged to a cult group. At the time that I was in hospital, I was declared wanted by the police. When I started Sahara Reporters, they first claimed that it was Artikul that set it up. When I released a story showing that Artikul stole money and bought a house in Othumah, US, they said it was Abassunjo that was funding me. When I released that Abassunjo slept with his son's wife, they said it was the devil that was using me. So it is... Yes. They've accused me of all kinds of things. But I challenge them because they also accused me of working for Jonathan when we were reporting against Sierra Dua. When Jonathan came to power, we started reporting against him. They said I was working for Bolat Tinumbu. When I reported that Bolat Tinumbu had a drug history, of which was a drug seller in Chicago selling heroin, they said it was the devil that was using me. So I get blackmailed, and the one who is most blackmailed. It comes to the territory of my work. But the question is, why is it that nobody has been able to produce any evidence that I blackmailed anybody? There was a young person who I actually groomed, who went and produced a tape claiming that I demanded money from him. It was false. And everybody knew it. It's the reason why it's no longer that's activated. But I'll tell you something. If you are doing what I'm doing, what do you expect them to do? I mean, I gather a room full of young people. And you guys are not pushovers. I'm sure most of you in this room are graduates. And nobody paid you to come here. And you know they are leaving this place with a message to force them out of power. What do you think you will hear from them again next time? Because they are watching us live. They are hearing us live. They are saying, "Like me, like me." This guy is going to push us out of power. Because when I started, they said, "Oh, we are only on the internet." I went to Kano, "Ah, they said, you know, you are trying to please Jonathan us." I came to South South, they said, "Ah, you must say you are brothers." I went to Oweiri, and people were shouting,[1155.59][1155.59]"Ah, they said you are appealing to the IPO members." Now I'm in Kalaba, and you see these people. I guarantee you, you will hear something different tomorrow. So don't worry about that. Regardless of what they tell you about me, I've been around for 30, 29 years. It will be 30 years next year that I have been fighting against the system, fought against the military, fought against Thornton, I fought against Abassunjo. There was a time they used to accuse me of always reporting against people from certain section of the country. They didn't even know that Jonathan and I come from the same place. Most of you don't know. There was a time they accusing me, "Ah, Yoruba people, oh, my name is Yoruba. I speak Yoruba. I come from the Yoruba speaking side of the job." You know, this is, it's called the job boy. So if I was going to pitch them to anybody, it will not be my brother Jonathan. But the moment Jonathan started spilling, I did not spear him. Because that's how I am. And I'm not mentioning my tribal affiliation to appeal to anyone of you because I have not asked you the reason why I expose it to you. Because somebody is going to ask you, like you said, brother here, said, "This is the first time I meet a Yoruba man, that I can swim better than you do." You know, if you get in tight water. So it's not a Yoruba thing. Look, there are good Yorubas, there are bad Yorubas. There are good ethnic people, there are bad ethnic people. There are good outsiders, there are bad outsiders. So don't let us play dead link. It's not necessary. Let us all the good people gather ourselves. When these people are stealing in Abuja, they don't have ethnic groupies. They don't speak Yoruba or Hausal. They speak the language of Brits. They've just been counting the things, like, "Give me, give me, give me, everybody give it." And before you know it, they marry to themselves. And some of them who are from here, their best houses are not in Cross River. It's in Abuja and Lagos. Why don't they give their best houses here? Some of them own universities outside of here. Because they are not greed. Let me go back to other questions. The transformation we are expecting, how many years would you require to achieve it? Zero years. It will start from day one. You will see transformation from the day of swearing in. Speech alone will tell you. And by the way, yes, it's true. The transformation will start as from, you will see some people, even at the swearing in, even if they stand under air conditioning, they will start sweating because they know that something is going to happen in the country. And I don't think that a lot of African leaders are attending swearing in, by the way. Because all those old guards in Africa, they are also in trouble. We will ensure that Africa is rid of all, too many of these leaders who are not serving the interest of their people. Would you adjust your tenure to a single term? If you decide after four years that I'm done, please, by every means, vote me out. If not, we have another four years to do. What I think what you mean is, you want to do a single term so that after four years I can leave. It's up to the people. If they say to me, "We need you to do another four years," I will be your partner. I'm going to be the first personal assistant to Nigeria that will be elected to office. How will you cope with those opposing you, especially those who are angry with your media outfits, Sahara Reporters, for exposing their evil actions, knowing fully well that most of them are politically powerful? There's no powerful person politically. We make them powerful because we are afraid of them. What Sahara Reporters have taught me is that we can dare them and nothing will happen.
Nothing.
Nothing. I've been, they sent assassins after me. Right now, I have several court cases. All the money that I brought into Nigeria a year ago to serve us, Sahara Reporters was seized by Saraki, right? But I'm still standing. And I'm not saying that I have any protection. Have you, since we came here, have you seen a policeman? The best policeman we can have are UKIP. They are the best soldiers that can protect us. Our conscience will be our greatest protectors. And they know it. So there's no powerful person. They become powerful because of the way we treat them. The moment we don't call them powerful, they will become ordinary people. I have seen seven presidents come and go in Nigeria. Seven of them. And there's nothing powerful about these people. Nothing. It's because of the respect you give them. The respect they don't desire that we give them, that makes them feel powerful. And if someone is saying that someone is not powerful, you can understand what I'm, they want telling you because I have confronted a lot of powerful people, principalities and interests in this country. And I'm sure the reason for you not to work with me to lead Nigeria into a state of fearlessness. Fearlessness. That is the message that you are willing to. And you know the scientific fearlessness. And this question is quite straight. Where are all the funds that have been received by, going to, or received, going to, made by us? Well, all of them, they are gofundme.com slash shure2019. And you see how much we are making, we have made so far. Most of them are going into some of our events. Like I said, there's a combination of contributions from people like you. Sometimes we have to spend money, but all of it will be accounted for. We just open a Nigerian account. I don't know how much they have there, but probably 100,000 Nigerian. And we have enough money to fund these people. What exactly happened to the subsidy remover funds? Subsidy remover is a scam that must be stopped. When we get off, there's no subsidy. We are always subsidizing the criminals in this country. And we know that. To show the transparency of the use of this sponsor, we will show that Nigerians can access a website where there's explanation of how government funds are used. Beyond that, there will be everybody governing. We are at the declaration forum, and we make it public by itself. And we will be based, bringing it to people who are under the rules of law online. We have to do it. It's the only way we can stop this leaf. We are set the question. Who have, Saraki did it, that's what is being tried. Also, to make available to Nigerians publicly, all the owners of companies in this country and their own property. So that if we award a contract to a company, you can go online and check if you know the owner of the company. It is a crime in Nigeria for a government to acquire a contract with the sale of son or an unborn baby. The reason we don't find out this is because our company information and the information about companies registered in Nigeria are not made from there. It must make them public from day one. Same thing will also happen to people still on the run for election. That's how we can find out all the people who have paid certificates, who are running for office or why not be very easily. Because if I claim that I went to the University of Lagos, and I didn't go to the University of Lagos, if you go to any court side and find that I didn't, you will raise a law and believe that I didn't see this guy at the University of Lagos. Anybody that enters the University of Lagos here, University of Lagos, you realize, there are not too many of you here. But you know that I went to UNEFA, right? So if I claim that I went to another school that I didn't go to, is this it for you to come out because the information will be publicly available? We have to encourage transparency across board. One of the things that we do, even before the election, is that I will declare my assets so that everybody can know what Shure has now. So that Shure doesn't come out with a mansion in Kalaba after he wins election. You know, even though I like Kalaba and I've seen some mansions, I am not going to buy a mansion with your money. And I can leave comfortably after that. Something happened during one of our visits to Kaduna, and I think everybody should take a cue from that. There's a man called Balara Bemusa. He was the former governor of Kaduna State. His house doesn't have a guard. You can walk into his living room any time of the day. And his house has never been bugged before. And kidnappers have never been there to kidnap him. Because they know that he's a honest man. So if you're a honest man, you don't even need police guards. But the moment you are not honest, even all the policemen in this world cannot guard you against people who are angry. So I will get to one more question. We come from a country, I've come from a country where politicians don't do what they preach. How do we believe that you are different? Take into consideration, if you answer me politically, I will take you as one of them. You know my political answer? I am not a politician. That's my political answer. And I mean it. I have behind me 30 years of doing what is right. You can check my degree, you can check my history, both old history and contemporary history. And what it means is that I've always done something differently from everybody. When the entire, almost the entire media in this country were doing media the same way, I came with Sahara Reporters, right? When the student leaders across Nigeria wanted to do something different, I was part of the student movement. When there was a movement in this country that was doing a pro-democracy movement, instead of going with the military, who were bribing people with 505 in those days, I went to the side that suffered. Because of that people, I was expelled twice from the University of Lagos for political reasons. So I spent six years, I realize, instead of four years. You know, not because I did anything wrong, because I stood on the right side of right. I have been in prison, well, not convicted, but I was sent to different prisons in this country for eight different times. I've been tortured, beaten. These are valuable records you can check on. So I've always been... So, I've always been different. And that is the only insurance I have, and the warranty I have. I come with an eight-year warranty if, when you elect me to office. What the warranty means is that if any of the attributes I place in front of you turns out to be false, you can take me back. And not me back in my village. So, I want to thank you once again for coming. We try the best we can to attend to all your questions, but do not let the questions stop there. Ask those questions online, Twitter. I do virtual town hall meetings on Facebook Live, and I see a lot of you. If you haven't followed me, please follow me. Follow all of our handles on Twitter, on Facebook, and on Instagram. And we'll continue to reach out to you. Again, I apologize, and I mean profusely that I have to leave so that I can make it to a very important battle ground stage tomorrow. We're heading to Kano. Alorin, and those of you who know Alorin, you know he's the real estate of one guy. And we have to take the place back, and the people of Alorin are expecting us. We have to go to Lagos tonight and travel to Alorin tomorrow. Please, do not get, do not be upset with me. I apologize that I have to leave now, and I thank you so much for coming. I will urge you once again to...
Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back!
Thank you. Take it back! Take it back! All right, we still have a bunch of questions here, but we'll find a way to deal with that. Even me, I'm wishing we could stay. Because it's supposed to actually look into the organized private sector, and Mr. Ken and Cipita is standing there. We even wanted to ask the coach of bed, time is tight, he's going to come back to Calabar. And this time, we are going to use the stadium. This was a test run, and we are definitely going to do it. Uh, we are always a king, the chairman of the global organizing committee. There is nothing local about this, I'll take it back. It's a global movement, and we have the chairman of the global organizing committee, Omri Eken, Inyan, and other members of the ELC. He will come and give us a foot of thanks. Why the good name? And we please call all the members to come to the stadium. Yes, all the members of there, we say, "Come on to the stadium." Great guys, and I, you know, we appreciate that. We need this possible, do you remember? Make this possible, please, come, 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 make it possible. Come, 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 please. All the GOC members. Take it back!
Take it back!
Please, I would give a round of applause now. Uh, I got somebody that asked me if I'm giving the Minister of Communications, if I would... Yes, so did I. So, the question. I do not intend to become the Minister of Communication or any minister for that matter. I am wanting to become the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And just to shock you, when I become president, the current Minister of Communications will not be qualified to be a class captain under our government. They're not as good. He will be a consequential minister. All right, Chairman of the GOC, you want to give a foot of thanks?
Take it!
Back!
Take it!
Back!
Take it!
Back!
I'd love to sing this song. Aluta kontiwa. Aluta kontiwa. Aluta, aluta, aluta kontiwa. Victoria, Victoria asada. Victoria asada. Victoria, Victoria, Victoria asada. Take it!
Back!
Um, I want to quickly appreciate every one of you that have spent your time to be here. Um, we understand that in Cross River State, to get this population, you must pay heavily for it. But I appreciate you because I can see that all of you here believe that help is on the way. And that is why you are here. Please, continue to engage with us, most especially those that came from Boki, as far as Akamba. I want to appreciate you. Mr. Paulie, if you're here, I appreciate you. Those people that came all the way from Obaliko, I appreciate all of you. We recognize you. Continue to engage us on our WhatsApp page with the hashtag #ShoraitownhallCalabar on WhatsApp, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. You can check the phone numbers on the backdrop. Just as you, if you're on WhatsApp, just drop with hashtag #Shoray or hashtag #ShoraitownhallCalabar. We'll now add you to the group. We want to encourage every one of you here. We believe that you are leaders of various capacity. Go home and form yourselves. Go home and show capacity. Let us drive this country the way we want it. I appreciate the ELC members importantly, the, the, the GEOs. I want to appreciate the members, they've not had sleep at all. And especially those that followed us to Bakasi. Among you here, you've been wonderful people, working with you. You call people at midnight, they come out, I appreciate you. Mr. President, awaiting inauguration, we appreciate you for considering Calabar. In Calabar, when presidential aspirants come, they stop by government house, they go to Peregrino House, and they go back. They have never done this, but he came, he said he wants to consult with the youth. I think it's worthy of accolades. Retires back now. I appreciate all of you, all of you deserve an assurance, thank you.